6:15. Ms. Dave, are you ready? Okay. So with that, I will call the study session to order. Happy May 19th, 2015. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Asher.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Here.
And Mayor Atkins.
Here. We don't have any special orders of the day for this agenda. Are there any public comments on things that aren't on the study session agenda? Because we'll have plenty of discussion about the P-Bid.
Are we going to have a chance to comment after?
Oh, yes. Yeah, Joyce, yeah, we'll, we'll, you'll have a chance to talk after the staff presentation.
I'd rather speak after.
Okay, all right. So without further ado, Karen, are you taking the lead on this?
Yes, I am.
All right. You are.
Timestamping it so I can run over there. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and for those of you in the audience, both here and on TV. So today is a study session on the proposed citywide property-based business improvement district for the Emery-Garand shuttle. And so this presentation is maybe 10, 15 minutes max. And so if there are any questions after that, perhaps unless it's a clarification question, we can, your question might be covered in the presentation. So most of you have seen this slide before, is what is a citywide property-based business improvement district? It's a special assessment district with a levy determined by the special benefit received by the assessed property owners. It is assessed annually and collected through the county property tax rolls. It requires a Prop. 218 ballot process, which means that a ballot would be sent to every affected, potentially affected parcel owner, and then city council action to adopt. And what is put in fort, put in front of the parcel owners is a management plan, which will include everything from governance to the proposed assessment formula. It's a protest vote-by-mail ballot, and the ballots are weighted according to the proposed assessment levy. There is a public hearing before the council can take action, and the council can only take action if, in fact, the Prop. 218 ballot process is in the affirmative. And even then, the council may choose to approve or disapprove the proposed P-Bid, based upon what is heard in the public hearing or other input. So the current property-based assessment district has three land use parcels categories, which are commercial, which includes all commercial other than industrial warehouse, and then there's industrial warehouse, and then there's for rental housing. Currently, the P-Bid does not include homeownership parcels, though some condos do pay into the Emery-Garand through development agreements. The TMA board, right now, consists of the seven highest assessed and/or direct-billed property owners, one property owner at large elected by the membership, one direct-billed housing representative, and one member of the general public, which currently is the Chamber of Commerce, well, was the Chamber of Commerce representative, but that is actually a vacancy right now. The current P-Bid is for a 10-year renewal period. It sunsets after this coming fiscal year. Next year would be the last end of service under the current funding agreement. And the annual assessment is capped at 5%, but that can be cumulative. The proposed P-Bid, I want to give you a little history, and that really is that there was a lot of discussion about a year or so ago about funding strategy, both long-term for the P-Bid, as well as capital needs. The council directed staff to establish an Emery-Garand task force that was made up of various stakeholders, including representatives of the commercial, as well as residential community, and current members of the TMA. That task force made a recommendation that was really upheld by council, and that was to focus on the extension of a P-Bid for the primary funding source, but also for staff to look at alternative funding sources, both for operating as well as capital costs. And staff has been in communication with the Alameda County Transportation Commission, and it will be a competitive bid process, but we feel that we are well-positioned to be able to receive some funding for that, either for rolling stock buses and potentially for the portion of the Emery-Garand that is of general benefit or regional benefit. But those calls will start, there might be one starting this year, but it'll be over the next two years that those calls for proposals will be released, and we, staff plans to work with the TMA to go after that money as well. So the enabling legislation for the proposed P-Bid comes from two places. One is the State of California Property and Business Improvement District Law of 1994, as well as City of Emeryville Ordinance Number 15003, which just took effect. And that clarifies that a P-Bid can be initiated by council, as well as by petition. It lowers the threshold of petition to 30% rather than 50%. The actual ballot process is still a protest vote of no more than, of 50%, so that's not changed. It really is the petition, since the signature is collected, to initiate the P-Bid, that there was a lower threshold. And the fact, and to make it clear that residential parcels can be included in the P-Bid. Under the State of California law, certain court cases have held that any property that receives a special benefit should be assessed, but to make sure that that's clarified, that was enshrined as well in the local P-Bid. So just to summarize the proposed P-Bid. Now, some of this is a little different than what went on the packet on Thursday. There were some further discussions with the assessment engineer, and he took a, did a review of the methodology that was used. And so in addition to trips generated by parcel land use, what I will be presenting today, and what will be included in the management plan and assessment report when it's finalized, is also to consider service access, more specifically. And that is that there are some routes that have seven-day service and some routes that have five-day service. And so it can be argued that those that are receiving seven days of service are getting more special benefit than those that are getting five-day service. And so we're making that adjustment. 80% of the parcels in the city do fall as being at least a quarter of, no more than a quarter of a mile from a seven-day service route. So what it does is it really lowers those that are not part of the 80%, but, and slightly raises those the 80%. And I have a chart that will give you the comparison of the five-day versus the seven-day service. And we will be doing a parcel-by-parcel analysis, because in some cases, just to do a ratio, just to draw a radius of a quarter of a mile, you may be expecting people to cross a railroad track, you know, where in fact, it's impossible to do so. So that is going to make the determination of the parcel-by-parcel analysis a little bit more challenging than we had originally, but we are working on that. The other thing in the proposed P-Bid management plan is to clarify that annual assessments could be recalculated every year for changes in land use and/or service access. So for example, the new pedestrian bridge proposed for 53rd Street could open up five- and seven-day service access. Or, you know, there are parcels that do change land use. Or if the TMA, through, bless you, through their authority, change service in a way that warrants a recalculation. So that's going to be enshrined in the management plan. Also, all parcels, bless you, are being considered in the, for the P-Bid assessment, including residential, as well as commercial property owners.
I just have to ask a question here. I don't think we could, how can we assess parcels that are beyond a quarter-mile walk?
We're not.
From a bus?
We're not.
They're being excluded.
No, there's a distinction between those that are a quarter of a mile for a route that runs seven days a week, and a quarter of a mile of a route that runs five days a week. And so we're varying the assessment based upon whether or not you're part of the 80% of parcels that are within a quarter of a mile of a seven-day route, or the 20% of parcels that are within, that are not within a quarter of a mile of a seven-day route, but reserve, but receive five-day route service.
And what about the parcels that are more than a quarter of a mile from any stop, any, any route?
There are very few of those parcels. They will be included in the assessment district, because routes could change, but the assessment, as long as they're more than a quarter of a mile, is zero.
They will be assessed zero?
Zero. They are in the assessment district, because you want to capture them if the land use changes or the service, oh, sorry, you want to capture them if the, if the service access changes.
Okay.
For example, if there was a route that went up Adeline, for example, that would pretty much capture those few remaining houses in the northern end of the triangle. But until that happens, or, or if it doesn't happen, their assessment would be zero. Also, another issue is governance. And the proposed, the proposed management plan would maintain the TMA as the owner's representative, with the TMA board composition bylaws, something that the staff recommends that be very general in the management plan, because that takes kind of a vote of everyone to be able to change. But it should be, it could be enshrined in the contract that the city has with the TMA for the life of the P-Bid. That provides a certain amount of review by the city to make sure that it is, in fact, equitable. And if bylaws are one, or need to be changed, it would just be kind of an amendment to that contract, as opposed to, you know, of course, would follow the bylaws and how you make those changes, but it would, it would give the city a little bit more of ability to monitor or insert itself if it became necessary. Staff is also proposing that this P-Bid be a 15-year renewal, so run a term of 15 years. The proposed P-Bid, sorry, the P-Bid ordinance that was recently adopted does allow for the city council to disestablish the P-Bid, which is a little different than under state law, that it really has to be the, the parcel owners that decide to do that. But this would provide for the city council. So for example, excuse me, the E-Bot, if that regional transportation plan was enacted and there was some regional funding, you know, that might be a reason why the, the city might deestablish the P-Bid. So it allows for that. The proposed P-Bid would start in fiscal year 2015, 2016, for service year 2016. And just like now, the annual assessment would be capped at no more than 5%, but we are not, at this point, recommending a cumulative cap, that it could, you know, if you don't do it 5%, then you could raise it, you know, double that the next year, but that for the life of the P-Bid, it would not be more than 5%.
That's the, the increase.
The increase, yes, the increase. But the specific assessment would be recommended by the TMA through their process, and then be considered and essentially put on the, on the, on the property rolls by the council, as is now. And I would say, over the life of both of the P-Bids to date, the annual assessment has averaged less than 3% per year. So general versus special benefit. Some, I will say that the numbers that I have, I would say are virtually correct, but we are still making a few small adjustments, and so there might be some variation. But when you see it on June 2nd, you know, then we will have made all those little tweaks if we find that we need to have some. Right now, there is a difference between, so when you look at a P-Bid, the parcels that are assessed can only be assessed based upon the special benefit that they derive. If there's anything that's considered to be general benefit, then that cannot be funded through the assessment district and has to be funded through other ways. So this slide shows that the general benefit is going, would be about 12.81% of the total operating cost, for a cost of $462,840, pretty much dollars. And staff has already asked that council consider this as part of the mid-cycle budget review, to include that in the city budget for 15, 16, because that cannot be covered by the assessment district. We are in hopes that this is an area where ACTC could help out, because this is clearly part of regional benefit, it's pass-through trips and trips that cannot be assigned to any parcel. So for example, we have people who take, who might walk to the MacArthur-Bart, or get off at the MacArthur-Bart, and take the Emery-Garand to 40th and San Pablo, get on AC Transit, and go someplace else. I've actually done this once myself. I have gotten on the Emery-Garand in Berkeley and gone to MacArthur-Bart to be able to catch the airport shuttle to Oakland. So, you know, there are, you know, I don't know that's, it's not something that I think is very common, but the assessment engineer did look at those kinds of issues. I do believe that this dollar amount will actually be lower, because one of the things in our tweaking is there are those direct-billed parcels that are outside of Emeryville, that are not part of the assessment district, and they consist of about $120,000 worth of, of, of funding. That would potentially lower the general benefit cost, because they are being paid for, with something different than assessment dollars. So we'll have that specific number for when we come back. So the special benefit points, and this is the big picture, is essentially based upon land use times route frequency factor. So route frequency is the five-day versus the seven-day service. Common areas and multifamily housing, roads and easements, parking lots, parking garages, well, carbon areas in all buildings, roads and easements, parking lots, parking garages, gas stations, auto repair shops are excluded, because either they don't generate in themselves trips, or their use is completely automobile-based, like a gas station. So they aren't going to get a benefit from an alternative transportation source. You're not going to get on the Emery-Garand to fuel up your car. Just a map of, you can kind of see the different routes, and it's the Shell Powell Route, this is the seven-day service. And as you can see, it mostly is, a lot of it is serving the, the regional retail. So this is a big chart. I put the whole chart in for a review, but I'm just going to hit some high points. As I said, this is going to, this may end up being slightly different, but I did include what's not in your packet, and that is the difference between five-day versus seven-day service. And so just some highlights, that a single-family residential parcel, if they're on a five-day route, the proposed assessment would be slightly over $119 per parcel. This is based upon the ITE manual trip generation, in which it says that single-family households generate more trips than rental properties or multifamily properties. And if you are on a seven-day route, then that would be 100, almost $167 per parcel. General office, the proposed assessment for a five-day route is a little over $138 per 1,000 square feet. It'll be noted that the single-family, that is a per-year charge, so you would have to do the math to figure out if you're in office. And if you're on a seven-day route, that goes up to $193.41. General retail shopping, five-day route, $534.52, and seven-day route, $748.63, based on 1,000 square feet. Light industrial, range between, it would be either $87 or about $122 per 1,000 square feet. And multifamily residential, for a five-day route, is a little over $77 per year. And the seven-day route would be $108 per year. And so most house, there are very few single-family residential parcels in Emeryville, so the vast majority of residents are in multifamily, and they would be on a five-day route, $77.38, or $108.38. And then lastly, just, you can look at the warehouse, which would be $44.05 per 1,000 square foot, and $61.69 square foot. Some of these are quite different than what the assessment is currently, which just had the three broad categories. That was also based upon trip reduction, but kind of all smashed together. More fine-grating means that there are some people who will be paying less per unit than they are now, and some will be paying more. For those parcels that are multi-use, think of the marketplace, or some of the Bay Street, where you have movie screens, retail, you know, various different types, maybe even office. The assessment engineer will be looking at each parcels and determining the mix, and then that parcel will get kind of a weighted sum of all the different uses. So we're still in the process of doing that work. But that will be done in time for your June 2nd meeting. So before, I did a slide like this, that showed kind of in broad sweeps, kind of the breakdown of who's paying for what. And about 90% of the P-Bid at that time was being paid for by the commercial industrial payees. That's now about 80%, with the residential picking up some more with everyone now paying, as opposed to just those rental housing units that were not exclusively residentially zoned. This is not based on actual use, it's based upon access. But I did include in the packet the ridership survey, which I think supports a lot of, a little bit of the shift, in terms of, there is actually a correlation between access and use, which is kind of nice to see, that they do correlate to a large extent. So in terms of the governance, pretty much what's being proposed, the TMA role would essentially stay the same. It would act as the owner's representative. The role would be established by P-Bid law, the P-Bid management plan, and the TMA bylaws. The TMA would determine the shuttle service levels, with a difference that is subject to city review, and may require reassessment of parcels, and the development of an annual budget and P-Bid assessment levy recommendations. The city role is mostly the same with a couple of changes. One, which is not a change, is that P-Bid law says that the city shall contract with the owner's representative of the parcels that are being assessed, which is the TMA. However, the city will play a little bit more of a role in governance by facilitating a governance structure. We'll convene a meeting of stakeholders and work with the stakeholders to come up with a management structure and bylaws that is equitable. And staff proposes it be enshrined in the city TMA contract, for the reasons that I stated earlier. The city will now also have the role of, as the P-Bid administrator, of reviewing any proposed Emery-Garand service adjustments, to determine if the P-Bid should be reassessed based upon those service adjustments. So it's not to approve the actual service adjustments, but to review them to see if that would warrant the assessment engineer taking another look at the formula. So if there was a, you know, if all the routes became seven days, or if there was, you know, an additional route that, you know, made a difference in service to some versus others, those would all be reasons that the city would say, well, you can do that, but the P-Bid would have to be reassessed, and that feedback would be given to the TMA, and then, of course, they can always recommend that that be included in the next levy, if they want to do that. But still, overall, as really is in the P-Bid law, the bulk of decision-making is supposed to be with those that are, who are receiving the special benefit or are being assessed. So P-Bid schedule, that and green is kind of where we are now, or where we still need to go. The next council meeting would be on June 2nd, and that will be the finalized draft management plan and assessment engineer's report. And as part of that, the council would be asked to initiate the P-Bid proceedings. And so there would be resolutions to initiate those proceedings, and the next step would be to release, would be to prepare the ballots for every parcel. And the proposal is to send those out June 19th. It's a requirement, there's 45 days that parcels have to be able to participate in that ballot process. So August 4th would be when the ballots would be counted. There would then be a public hearing, assuming that that ballot process was affirmative. And then after that, the council would consider adopting the P-Bid. And the counting of the ballots, in the past, we've done that in the chamber right there. And it is open to the public, and anyone who wishes to can watch the vote take place. And we definitely had an audience last time. So assuming that all is affirmative, and the council does adopt the P-Bid, then staff would be working with our assessment engineer to get the property rolls updated to the County of Alameda by August 10th, so they could be placed on the 15, 16 property rolls. So I have two questions for the council. One is hopefully that you uphold staff's recommendation for the proposed P-Bid term to be 15 years, rather than the current 10, with, of course, the option to disestablish it if situation changes. And on the governance issue, staff's recommendation is to put in the management plan a very general sentence, that it shall be established on an equitable basis, and then to enshrine those details in the contract, as opposed to the management plan, giving a little bit of time for stakeholders to get together and figure out an equitable representation and decision-making process.
So, yeah, so I want to start off with a question here. Why would a two-bedroom condo with presumably the same potential number of inhabitants be assessed at a rate less than a two-bedroom, single-family house?
It's based upon access, not on use, and we really don't know how many people are actually living in any particular parcel. And I would also say is that we really looked at more fine-graining residential, but really the main difference in Emeryville is, is it a multifamily or a single family? So for example, at one point, we were looking at separating homeowner from rental, but in fact, in Emeryville, that is not as apparent as it may seem. And not only that, the ITE manual is really based on more of a suburban, this is for trip generation manual, is really based on more suburban model, which assumes that condos are like townhomes, as opposed to in inner cities, you know, a condo versus an apartment really.
So your first, your first statement was, it has to do with access? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Perhaps, maybe you speak, letting the engineer address these issues.
Absolutely.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Tim Soufer with NBS. I know I've met a few of you here and there. So basically, yeah, as Karen mentioned, the, the assessment is based on special benefit to the property. And so what we're doing is using access to the shuttle as that proxy to determine, you know, that. You could, there are different ways to do it, but we're trying to do it in a most objective way, and so we're doing it with this trip generation. And we really don't distinguish between, frankly, a one-bedroom condo and a two-bedroom condo. You know, it's, it's per, per unit. And so the single-family typically has more inhabitants than a condo. Of course, you could have situations where a condo is, four people live in it, in a single-family home, that somebody lives half the year in Florida or something, you know? I mean, so there's, there's always vagaries within, within those categories, but these statistics have been used for, you know, for literally for decades, and have been vetted, and we can point to them as objective criteria. Is that too long of an answer? Short of an answer, but I hope that summarizes it.
It's just not a satisfactory answer, but you've answered it.
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could go down to the point of doing surveys and seeing who lives in a place, you know, and do that every year, but that, it's cumbersome, it's difficult, and problematic.
Any other council questions?
To follow up on that, so this method of evaluating access has been over decades, potentially, of testing it. And there's been, I assume, litigation all about it, that has been resolved, because it's been shown to be objective. And so it's, it has stood the test of time. Is that what you're saying, basically?
Yeah, I mean, the ITE manual is used all over the United States. It's been the subject of, you know, probably extensive litigation with terms of like development impact fees, right, that are traffic-based and that kind of thing. It's, it's kind of the gold standard, which is why we used it. In the old days, if you will, of assessment districts, things were a little more subjective, and could be based on opinion, or, you know, best guess, that kind of thing, literally. The cases over the last decade, the court cases have said, you very clearly need to hang your hat on objective criteria that's been vetted well. And so that's why engineers' reports used to be this thick, and now they're this thick.
I would also add that our traffic impact fee historically had been based upon I would also add that our traffic impact fee historically had been based upon trip generation utilizing the ITE trip generation manual. So it is a, it's a relied upon standard in the industry of, of impact fees, certainly.
Any other questions from council? All right, so let's have public comment, you have three minutes, and just come on up and the next speaker can just stand behind the, the first speaker.
Joyce Jacobson for Admiral Drive, which is Watergate condos. First of all, I support Emery Go Round. I use it. I use my car part of the time, I use Emery Go Round part of the time, but that's a very valuable service to me, and a couple of years from now, it'll be even more valuable. So I support it very much, and I actually like the new plan quite a lot, and I'm willing to pay. I would like to be sure that residential homeowners, whether condos or houses, are represented on the TMA board. I know that right now, there is one position which goes vacant because of the peculiarities of the current residential properties that are eligible to have a representative. For instance, the owner of a large rental complex is apparently not very interested in what happens with the bus service in Emeryville. But now that homeowners are going to be involved, I would like to see two positions on the board specified for residents, people who actually live in Emeryville, not someplace else, who actually use the service, because we now need to have our voice. Now that we're paying for it, we need to have our voice. And I would like to know before I vote that we're going to have those positions. I don't want to leave it until sometime after I've voted. Thank you.
Next. Hi, Ron.
Hello. Sorry. Ron Freund, I live in the Western Front also. I'm going to follow up on what Joyce said, and then perhaps can ask the engineer for his input. In your report, the engineer, or the district report, it was extremely vague about management. The staff report, as Karen said, just wants something vague as well about equitably representing the various categories. I don't feel that it's a good strategy to go ahead with very vague, vague terms for the management. And I'm trying to resolve the issue between the weighting of the people that are contributing, and I guess the residents contribute. Between single-family and multi-unit, I figured 20%. Is that about? Come up. But in the management, there's no specification that that should be proportionate to that. Is that correct, too? The management could be a different proportion than...
Wait, the question's out, or...
No, don't. Let him answer.
Let, let Ron finish, and then you can just keep saying...
Okay. My point is, how do we protect the interests of, of the new group that's now being assessed? That is, the residents. I don't think one or two representatives necessarily does that. There's no specification as to how many at this point. We have seven now, but we could have 12, we could have six, I don't know. I believe that's all up for grabs. What I'd like to suggest is that the percentage required for certain kinds of decisions, such as assessment increases and route changes, be at a higher threshold than a simple majority. And that, that be set at something like 2/3 vote for those kinds of issues, and that the proportion of seats on the management be set at around 35% for residents. Otherwise, I can't see how the business community can simply always have the decision-making capability. So it would be kind of disproportionate to the weighting, but if it's not illegal or against P-Bid requirements, I'm suggesting you look at something along those lines to protect interests of residents. The second question, or I have two more points, I'll be quick. I'm not clear on what the city can do during the term of the P-Bid, other than disestablish it, and even that isn't clear to me when I look at the engineer report and I look at the staff report. The staff report says the city can disestablishment at any time. Last thing quickly, I'd like to suggest that there be some kind of a senior exemption, since it is a property tax-based district. Thank you.
Judy Timmel, resident for 22 years, living in Cohousing. We have discussed this at our meetings. We have 12 units involved, and so we are very concerned that, and would strongly prefer that this be a public transportation service. But on the other hand, we don't want to jeopardize the Emery Go Round either. So we would, we would like to say that if that is not possible, our primary concern would be one of representation, as the other two speakers have said, for the residents. The current representation structure isn't sufficient for this new plan. It needs to be commensurate ideally with usage, and I believe the last time we, we were here, usage of residents was estimated at over 30%. Even though we will be paying 21%, the usage would be 32%. So I think we need to establish that before we start voting. And I'm also uncomfortable that the city is in such a weak position with regard to the management of the P-Bid. I don't know if there's anything that you can do about that, but you are our elected representatives of the citizens, and yet you can't do anything about establishing schedules or, I don't know, what else? Rates, routes, et cetera. So, thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. Stuart Flashman, I'm attorney representing the Emeryville Property Owners Association. And I have several comments and one question. One of the comments has to do with the, the way the assessments are being done by different categories, and which I think is a good idea, making it more fine-grained, I think probably makes it considerably fairer. I'm a little concerned about the use of the ITE as the mechanism for determining access. As was mentioned, the ITE is primarily based on suburban development and suburban, it assumes a suburban-type development. Emeryville is not really a very suburban type, it's more urban than the typical suburban city. I think there needs to be some validation of those figures by at least for looking at a couple of categories and checking to make sure that the rates that the ITE gives are similar at least to the rates that Emeryville has. Otherwise, you're not really showing proportionality, and I would suggest your assessments may be vulnerable. Second question, second comment has to do with the governance. I think I agree with the, we agree with the comments that have been made about it more than just being, you know, generality, there needs to be some proportionality in the governance. You've made the assessments more fine-grained, perhaps the governance also needs to be more fine-grained with categories of, of representation for different categories of assessment. Also, I think the idea of a supermajority for some types of changes is a good idea. We have it in the state with Prop 13 and other types of, of measures, of bond measures. It, it makes some sense when you have some people with excess, perhaps an excess voting power. The last comment I would make is actually is a question, is I'm wondering about the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center, which is partly in Emeryville and partly in Oakland, and how is that being handled in terms of the assessment district?
Any other public comments?
I'm Don Bonney, I live on Adeline Street. My question is, other than administrative ease, why does the entire burden fall on property owners, and none of the burden falls on the people who actually use the service? I've lived here 15 years, I've never ridden it. I walk everywhere, or I drive, but I don't use Emery Go Round, and yet I'm going to be paying over $100 a year for it.
So?
I had a couple of comments. I think for years, we have been neglecting trying to get money from the sales tax, and I think we should make a major focus on getting money from the sales tax, as well as state cap and trade money. I was at a workshop yesterday, and for state cap and trade, the maximum amount of money that any jurisdiction in California can receive is only $15 million. So that really opens the door to Emeryville getting money for affordable housing, and to the Emery Ground if it's public transit. Nobody was there for the workshop from Emeryville, and I think that's significant. The question of fairness here, you're about to assess residents that don't know anything about this. I talk to people at 1500 Park, and say, you're going to be assessed, they don't know anything about it. I mean, this report wasn't even available till yesterday. I mean, that's not much time to take a look at all the details of it. The governance is definitely need to be changed. I would suggest a seven-member board with two seats for residents. You know, for years, the assessments haven't been fair, and then you complain that nobody does anything about it. Is the express bus service at Watergate Towers, is that a special benefit? Should everybody in the city be paying for that? Is there any kind of a plan, that we're going to have the Emery Ground go throughout the city? We don't have a plan. There's no service policy. They can stop and start service whenever they feel like it. And I don't think that's a good idea. I actually think the planning commission should review changes so that they get involved in the grant use. See, and that's another thing with cap and trade, if you took a project like Sherwin-Williams and you went there for a benefit, a grant, you could get affordable housing, and if you're sure that there's transit service, you might be able to reduce the parking requirements and make that development a little bit more affordable. And I think somebody should be stationed to try to get grant money all the time. That hasn't been happening, I think that's important.
Good evening, council members. Mayor, I'm Jeff Sears of Wareham Development. I've been on the board of the Emery Go Round for over 15 years. I'm currently the president, and I've heard a lot of good comments, I'm not going to repeat. I will say, I think the board has been success, first of all, I think almost everyone agrees the Emery Go Round's successful should continue, I certainly do. Second, I think one of the key things that has made it able to be successful is people are looking at the big picture and not trying to micromanage. We hire a very reputable general manager that makes a lot of the operating changes, so I don't think our board has found that we want to micromanage routes and all those sort of details, and I would discourage a plan that causes more micromanagement, because to some degree, you can't measure, are you taking the bus today, and are you taking the bus tomorrow? Everyone has to say it's a good public benefit, we get enough value that we contribute. So that's what I would say about that. I like the more fine-graining of uses, but they are, some of them curious, and maybe could use a little refinement. They do seem suburban in some nature and different from Emeryville's characterization. Restaurants have a very, very high burden. Now, restaurants that have big parking fields and draw from a regional area, that would make sense. But many, many of our little mom-and-pop restaurants that don't have any parking, that basically are tiny little shops on the street, this is a burden on top of the minimum wage that should be considered, I think. There's some other curious things, like there's a furniture store category, and there's a home furnishing superstore category, and it's four times as much as the furniture store. And I don't know who's going to decide what's a furniture store and what's a home furnishing superstore. So some of those things, you just want to be able to administer the program without having a whole team of people on city staff trying to do it. So fine-grained is good, just make it manageable would be my recommendation. I think the board would welcome more participation by residential representatives. The prior speaker said, we couldn't get someone to come for the residential seat. I have no question that if it's opened up to the larger number of payers that are being considered here, that there will be people who can actively participate in a positive way. Many of the speakers here representing residents tonight come to many of our meetings and are participating, even though not official members, and we welcome their participation. So I think there have been good comments, and hopefully they'll help you steer to the next step.
Any other public comment? Okay, I noticed the engineer was wanting to answer some prior...
Mr. Carpeau.
Oh, come on up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Emery Go Round is perfect, as far as I'm concerned, but I don't think they follow the, the steps of the AC Transit, because AC Transit come up with always this new thing about being greener. And Emery Go Round, we have lots of buses that really smokes a lot. We really don't operate that on a green basis, and there is no electric, no solar panel, nothing like that. Then the other question I have with Emery Go Round is that, we talk about it, but we don't have any service that goes from Emeryville to the West Oakland Bar Station. And that's really a waste, because anybody who goes to the West Bar Station there can save between 15 to 20 minutes in a ride, and not only that, the connection goes directly to Fremont and so forth. And also, the third point I want to bring here is a question of sanitation. We have all the garbage cans here that really need to be washed once in a while, and this is because people who have just dumped their stuff there in someone else's garbage can, and the neighbor, for instance, they get really uptight about it, because they're not there to police who dump stuff in their garbage can, and it smells terrible, you know? So if you want to tell Williams to take care of their garbage can, this is there. You know, they should at least shower them once in a while. Thank you.
I didn't use all my minutes, my seconds. May I use 10 seconds, just one more thing? I think it's important from a policy standpoint, I looked on my notes.
Okay, Jeff.
There are some payers on the new list of uses that have high amounts and have been people who the current PBID bills, and they don't readily pay. And we have a challenge of being able to collect on those people, and those categories on the list are things like post office and schools and so forth. And so I would say it's worth thinking about, we don't want to allocate costs that the system needs to run to people who we know won't pay or won't cause to pay. I mean, you have the ability to foreclose on someone's property if they don't pay their tax bill, but that is unlikely power that you will want to use on some of these payers. So that may be worth considering, just so that we don't allocate something to them that then they have trouble paying, and then the system needs that money and doesn't have it.
That's cool. That was actually one comment I thought about making, and then I just thought, well, everybody seems to know about it, and, but if you're, if you're including the school district and the post office, and they have fairly high amounts that they're supposed to pay, then it looks like that money is available to be used, but for years, they haven't paid at all. And so I just think that somebody needs to make a decision that either they're not going to be, the money isn't going to be collected, or there should be some acknowledgement of the fact that, that that money isn't really available, and take it out of the, don't leave it in there as though that money's going to be there to pay the, the budget. That's all. Thank you. And also, I think it's a great service, and I hope we figure out a way to keep it funded.
Besides Jeff, is there someone who wants to speak a second time?
I don't need too much time either. Just two comments. I think we should really look seriously at the question of whether it's public or private, because that's never been satisfactorily answered. And I also don't think a P-Bid is the right funding formula for the Emery Ground. There are other types of assessment districts, like in Los Angeles, they're creating an assessment district for a local transit system downtown, we might want to take a look at that. Thank you.
Joyce Jacobson again, since we're all getting second chances. I want to speak and, and support what Jeff Sears said about, let's not micromanage. We have an extremely efficient public transportation system in Emery Go Round. It's one of the best in California in terms of cost, and also as reliable a service... It's one of the best in California in terms of cost, and also as reliable a service as a bus service ever is. You know, there's always a certain amount of not reliability there. We've also had excellent management on the Board from the businesses, and as Jeff mentioned, they have hired very capable, well-informed, experienced people to run this system. So, including having somebody right now who has access to money at, or knows the roots to money at Alameda County Transportation Commission. So let's not mess with that. We've got a good thing going, and I think the management structure overall should be kept in place, except to have more resident voices.
Okay, so at this point, I'll close a public comment. We will have some council discussion. I wanted to offer the engineer an opportunity to respond to some of the questions, because it sounded like you wanted to.
I can just make a couple of general comments.
Okay. Please do.
Thank you, that was bothering me too. Just a few things that I picked up that technically I should probably comment on is the, well, the governance, obviously, there's a placeholder in there to discuss governance, and that's what the discussion was that Karen brought up. So we weren't necessarily advocating one or the other, except that there are a few different models. There are some very simple models, and then there are some extremely complex models, if you look at the way San Francisco does it, with percentages of arts organizations and nonprofits and all that kind of thing. I think you want something that's going to be reasonable. I think everybody's agreeing that, you know, a residential component as well as commercial makes a lot of sense. So on the governance, there's some flexibility there, and we are providing advice, you know, as we move forward. The comments about the ITE being suburban to some degree, maybe that's true, but again, it's a large data set that's been vetted over and over again. It is currently in use for your impact fee, and it's in use in San Francisco and other places that are more urban. Emeryville is unique, you know, there's just not a data set that would be Emeryville-specific, right? So we use something that's objective and that has been vetted. And I think the last question, there was something about some of the East Bay Shopping Center and what have you. Our analysis took into account every parcel that's within a quarter of a mile of a stop, and some of those happen to be in Oakland or what have you. And we talked about this just before the meeting, the shopping center is completely included in the analysis that was done. Nothing was missed.
So I have a question for you.
Yes.
With the, if this moves forward and is approved by ballot, does this trump prior conditions of approval for those complexes that had to pay in based on conditions?
What happens, well, in the current P-Bid, essentially, for the conditions of approval, we consider them in regards to payment into the Emery Go-Round met as long as there is a P-Bid. If the P-Bid was to go away, then we go back to what the language in that condition of approval says, which could vary. I know, for example, East Bay Bridge, it says, "Shall provide a weekly shopper shuttle." That's the condition of approval for a shuttle. That kind of, you know, that condition of approval was when there was this discussion about an Emery Go-Round, as opposed to there being an Emery Go-Round. And just to make the point about the East Bay Bridge and a little bit more, is those parcels that are in Emeryville pay into the Assessment District. Those parcels that are a part of the JPA with Oakland, that are in Oakland, such as Target, for example, are not part of the Assessment District, but they pay according to their conditions of approval, which are, you pay the P-Bid rate as long as there's a P-Bid. So that's one of the parcels that we consider a direct build parcel. They're not in the Assessment District, but we will get funding from that. And I believe, and I need to talk a little bit more with the Assessment Engineer, that that will actually end up reducing the city's contribution of general benefit, because right now, you know, that would be one of those parcels that would be under general benefit, since it's not within the Assessment District.
Okay. Another question here. For the assessed anticipated revenue that this would generate, that would meet, would that meet only today's operating budget, or would there be capacity to build reserves or to plan for system expansion?
This includes a operating contingency, a cash reserve, as well as a 3% cost of living increase every year. It does not include any service increases beyond, I think there's been some that are being made this year. That is not something that we can really calculate in a way that we could put it in a base, and there was some concern about having a P-Bid, that you could have wildly varying requests for rate adjustments based upon service. This is where I think it will be important for the city to be able to work with the TMA to identify outside funding. You know, if we can get some of that ACTC or MTC or whatever money for that general benefit part, or to expand service, which is usually what those kinds of funds are for, or more likely to be able to purchase buses. Right now, we're essentially capitalizing our ongoing revenue to pay for buses, so if we were able to get a grant for buses, that would provide more capacity for service expansion. But we did not do more than a 3% cost of living for the reasons that I just gave.
Thanks. So can you put up the slide where you want our feedback? I think you wanted a question about duration of the P-Bid, and you recommended 15 years. And then I think there was a governance question.
Yeah, and the governance question really is, and it's whatever the council directs staff to do, but, no, we wanted to be able to have some time to talk to stakeholders to develop not just the Board composition, but I know that there've been some questions about the bylaws, and we didn't want to do it in a hurry. I think it's probably easier to come up with a Board composition than it is bylaws. But the idea was, and one thing that could potentially be done, assuming that our city attorney and Assessment Engineer agree, is that in addition to those kind of general language, that we make it a point of saying, and that the city shall facilitate a discussion around the Board composition and the bylaws, and so enshrine that agreement in the multi-year agreement that the city has with the TMA. So the idea is that in order for monies to be released for the Emery Go-Round and for the TMA to act as the owner's representative, there has to be a contract between the city and the TMA to do that. So that is a place that really has just as much force as putting it in the management plan, and it kind of puts the city as being kind of the mediator in the sense that, you know, there has to be something that all parties can live with in order for it to be included in the TMA contract that you would be then asked to approve. And that is a multi-year contract, it runs the length of the P-Bid. And so to change the composition or change bylaws after that would cause that contract to be amended by the council, which I think provides a lot of protection for all the different stakeholder interests to be equitable.
I have a question. So where in the calendaring would that contract fall?
In the past, it's always come to the council in November and December. It's kind of two bits. One is that in July for the August property rolls, that's when the TMA submits a preliminary budget and a recommendation for the levy. And then November, December is the compensation agreement, which is every year by resolution. But the base contract between the city and the TMA would be done essentially, probably, would be done in time for 2016, because that's the new service year, and is only done, well, once unless amended for the life of the P-Bid. So, you know, that is a document that, you know, is pretty institutionalized in terms of specifics, and so that was the staff's recommendation, is to use that document to be able to provide for Board composition bylaws that have had some discussion, and all the stakeholders agree is a way to go forward. And that language, I would assume, could be added to the management plan, as opposed to the more, you know, having, trying to work everything out and specify it in time to get out in time for the June 2nd council meeting.
Yes, Scott.
This is just a question about what percent of parcel owners did not pay as a percentage of budget? Were you able to make 95% of the billed?
I don't remember the percentage off the top of my head, I didn't bring that with me, but I will say, is those that are part of the property rolls and don't pay, then a lien is against their property. And most people aren't paying, you know, they're either paying their property tax or they're not paying their property tax, so, you know, they're not choosing not to pay the P-Bid, but they're paying all the rest of their property taxes. So that's a relatively small amount of people, I mean, those are people who are defaulting all their property tax bill. The bigger issue are, I would say, the public agencies that historically we have, well, have not responded to direct bill. You know, their properties are not on the property roll, so, you know, they're not assessed that way, nor do we have the opportunity to put a lien on their property if they don't pay. And, so without calling out public agencies, the city pays, I'll put it that way.
I would add for the school district, our master joint occupancy agreement for the ECL does include the, specifically included the provision of payment of the Emery Go-Round assessment as part of the operation and maintenance expenses that would be paid by the city and the school. So it's meant to be captured there for, at least for the ECL project.
And I was just told that the complete non-payment is about $125,000 a year. But that's from all sources, but it's primarily public agencies. You know, we don't have a way of making the federal government pay.
Well, you can't sue them, but...
We can sue them. Our city attorney's been on a roll recently, so...
You want to sue him before June 30th, girl?
So is the council comfortable with these two, the staff recommendations here?
Yeah, Mayor, I can, in terms of the council direction, I think the 15-year term is one that will go well with the people who are voting. On the P-Bid governance, I think it was very clear from the comments made that we do want representation from residential owners. And the other thing is, I believe the engineer, you know, this whole discussion around ITE being a suburban instrument, it's the best that we have, it's been proven, it's been vetted, it's been attacked many times by the lawyers, so it's not a perfect instrument, but it's one we can use, I think, successfully. And then in terms of looking at the government institutions that don't pay, and I'm thinking about the feds, the post office, and if the Treasury hadn't moved out, they probably wouldn't have paid either. But let us see if we can pursue a way to exclude them, because that's a big chunk of money, and if it's not coming in, it queues your budget year after year after year. So with that, I would certainly support the staff recommendations. And I'd also like to give a real vote of appreciation to Karen and the engineer. It's a very complex job, it took a lot of time, and to the Board of Directors of the TMA too. This service is critical to the economic and quality of life in this city, and we've got to see that it moves forward.
I'd also like just to thank Diana Kena from the Community Development Department.
Oh, absolutely.
She really helped with particularly some of the parcels, and we'll be continuing to ask for her help. She's been invaluable in this.
All right, so I also, before we adjourn this meeting, I want to say that this was a very complex project as well, in that just even starting with differentiating between special benefit and general benefit was something, you know, I think we just had to get our minds around collectively and individually, and so this is a, this body of work does represent quite substantive brain power here. So again, I also want to express my thanks for the work that's gone on to this, and let's move forward.
Great.
So with that, the study session is adjourned. You're welcome to stay for a scintillating evening, but I'll give a two-minute break if people do want to move on.[1726.71]